Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so.
I figured at this age they can tell time.
All right, we will reconvene the open session and I'm going to recognize Brian Matthews, Assistant County Manager for comments.
Good morning. How is everyone this fine morning? Thank you for taking time to come for part three of our Union County Water Workshop. In our previous work session, the board had some questions about some of the items that we presented. And what we're here today is to go over those items and then get some direction from the board how we move forward with the utility, the fees and the rates and how we operate. So just talk about the purpose, as I said, as a follow-up, get some direction from the Board of County Commissioners overview. We've talked about the rate model and how that works and what's part of that. And STANTEC is actually with us today virtually to talk about some of the changes the board asked to see what impacts would have if you were to make some decisions about your rate balancing as well as your miscellaneous fees and system development fees. So we'll go over that and then we'll review the budget and how that could be affected. And then ultimately, what is the timeline for the Board of Governors as well as the Board of Commissioners taking action on this? So what we talked about is your rate structure. We had a discussion about the fact that we're out of balance. Our water customers are essentially not paying the full cost of service. The sewer customers are really subsidizing that. And that's not done, that wasn't purposely done. That's just over time. It's just kind of gotten out of balance since the last time that we had a study done. And we also talked about the fact that our industrial customers are out of balance as well. We have one customer that has a special rate and that is not consistent with our other industrial customers. So we talked about that. We also talked about our agricultural community and how water plays into their needs and what we could do there. And then ultimately, our fees, where last year we did a 50% increase in our miscellaneous fees, the board was kind enough to consider that. We had not done an adjustment for those for 25 years. And so we knew it would be a big ask. So we did half last year. We're asking to go back to the other half this year. And then ultimately, we will also need to update our system development fees because we're in that five-year window to complete our system development fee study and then have the board readopt that. So what I'd like to do now is turn it over to STANTEC and have them sort of go over some of those items that the board asked them to review. And then we'll, I'll then facilitate a discussion about the rates and the fees and the system development fees after that.
Brian, I have one question. If you would address the board and the general public about our water situation with Anson County right now and where water in the east is coming from?
Certainly. So recently, within the last couple of days, we learned that Anson County had a major lightning strike at their facility. It damaged some of their equipment. They're not, they weren't able to actually produce the water to send us the water which serves our east side of the county. And so we have actually shifted over to our Catawba water source to serve that area. We're fortunate in that we have good partnership with Lancaster Water and Sewer. They're able to meet our demands. So even though we have an amount that we own, we also have a contract with them that they can help us with additional water if necessary. We're also fortunate in that the weather has been a little bit wet lately. So the water usage has been excessive. However, last week when the temperatures were in the 90-degree range, we saw a lot of water usage. So what we're hopeful will happen is Anson will get their system back online before the temperatures get so high that we get a major water usage or we'll have to actually have our, ask our customers to start conserving more. This is important because you approved the Yadkin Water Project, which is under construction. And in the future, that will be the water source for that area. We won't have to rely on Anson County. And we will still have Catawba as a backup if we have any issues with Anson. Did that answer your question?
Yes. And conversely, if it happened in Catawba...
Yadkin could then help serve Catawba as well.
With our contracts with Charlotte too.
Yes, absolutely. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andy Burnham with STANTEC. And I know they're on it virtually, so I'm not sure if they can, they don't know if they're, if you see them, but they'll, they can talk about the slides that are here.
Sure. And Brian, this is Andy Burnham. If you could just maybe share the screen so I could help indicate when to advance the slides. That would be helpful.
Good. I'm not technologically savvy.
All right, we will reconvene the open session and I'm going to recognize Brian Matthews, Assistant County Manager for comments.
Good morning. How is everyone this fine morning? Thank you for taking time to come for part three of our water, Union County Water Workshop. And our previous work session, the board had some questions about some of the items that we presented. And what we're here today is to go over those items and then get some direction from the board, how we move forward with the utility, the fees and the rates and how we operate. So just talk about the purpose, as I said, as a follow-up, get some direction from the Board of County Commissioners, overview. We've talked about the rate model and how that works and how, what was part of that. And StanTech is actually with us today virtually to talk about some of the changes the board asked to see, what impacts would have if you were to make some decisions about your rate balancing as well as your miscellaneous fees and system development fees. So we'll go over that and then we'll review the budget and how that could be affected. And then ultimately, what is the timeline for the Board of Governors as well as the Board of Commissioners taking action on this? So what we talked about is your rate structure. We had a discussion about the fact that we're out of balance. Our water customers are essentially not paying the full cost of service. The sewer customers are really subsidizing that. And that's not done, that wasn't purposely done, that's just over time, they've just kind of gotten out of balance since the last time that we had a study done. And we also talked about the fact that our industrial customers are out of balance as well. We have one customer that has a special rate and that is not consistent with our other industrial customers. So we talked about that. We also talked about our agricultural community and how water plays into their needs and what we could do there. And then ultimately, our fees, where last year we did a 50% increase in our miscellaneous fees, the board was kind enough to consider that. We had not done an adjustment for those for 25 years. And so we knew it would be a big ask, so we did half last year, we're asking to go back to the other half this year. And then ultimately, we will also need to update our system development fees because we're in that five-year window to complete our system development fee study and then have the board readopt that. So what I'd like to do now is turn it over to StanTech and have them sort of go over some of those items that the board asked them to review. And then we'll, I'll then facilitate a discussion about the rates and the fees and the system development fees after that.
Brian, I have one question. If you would address the board and the general public about our water situation with Anson County right now and where water in the east is coming from.
Certainly. So recently, within the last couple of days, we learned that Anson County had a major lightning strike at their facility. It damaged some of their equipment. They're not, they weren't able to actually produce the water to send us the water which serves our east side of the county. And so we have actually shifted over to our Catawba water source to serve that area. We're fortunate in that we have good partnership with Lancaster Water and Sewer. They're able to meet our demands. So even though we have an amount that we own, we also have a contract with them that they can help us with additional water if necessary. We're also fortunate in that the weather has been a little bit wet lately, so the water usage has been excessive. However, last week when the temperatures were in the 90-degree range, we saw a lot of water usage. So what we're hopeful will happen is Anson will get their system back online before the temperatures get so high that we get a major water usage or we'll have to actually have our, ask our customers to start conserving more. This is important because you approved the Yadkin Water Project, which is under construction. And in the future, that will be the water source for that area. We won't have to rely on Anson County and we will still have Catawba as a backup if we have any issues with Anson. Did that answer your question?
Yes, and conversely, if it happened in Catawba...
Yadkin could then help serve Catawba as well.
With our contracts with Charlotte, too.
Yes, absolutely. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andy Burnham with StanTech. And I know they're on it virtually, so I'm not sure if they can, they don't know if they're, if you see them, but they can talk about the slides that are here.
Sure. And Brian, this is Andy Burnham. If you could, just maybe share the screen so I could help indicate when to advance the slides, that would be helpful.
Good. I'm not technologically advanced enough, so I'm going to have Ken figure that out.
Okay.
So let's minimize that and then we can... That work for you, Andy?
That's perfect, thank you. If you want to go ahead and advance it to the next slide, I can get things started. So Chairman, members of the board, Andy Burnham with StanTech. Also on the phone today is Deborah Kleckner. We were both able to be at the prior parts of the workshop, just unfortunately not in person today, but happy to be with you virtually. So what we wanted to do is just go over, as Brian indicated, some follow-up discussion and some kind of model runs, if you will, as a result of the final day and direction from the workshop from when we were there in person. And so what I wanted to start with is just the scenario summary of where we left off last time. So at the workshop discussions, you know, we looked at a few different options of, you know, an updated baseline scenario, no wastewater expansion, you know, really no water system growth, inclusion of Site B, and then no rate increase scenario. And, you know, we kind of built a matrix at the top of the screen that just kind of helped you understand what was in each of those different scenarios and model runs. And then what was the total capital spend or total CIP in each of those? And then we correspondingly identified different rate plan options that corresponded to those scenarios. So for the baseline, we had identified a 4% annual plan of increases to keep up with O and M, regulatory requirements, increases in inflation, and changes in demands. And then we built an alternative scenario in that baseline that said, well, if we don't do an increase in fiscal '23, what would the future increases have to be? And those were identified at 4.5% per year. We then identified for the no wastewater expansion scenario, you know, a kind of a bifurcated plan of 3.5% increases through '27. But then when the growth dropped, we'd have to go to higher increases, starting in '28 at 5.5% per year. Then we looked at a no water system growth scenario coupled with no wastewater expansions that showed again lower increases in the first five years, but higher increases in '28 through '32 at 4.5% per year as compared to the baseline. And then we looked at a couple of scenarios around Site B expansion that included kind of a level plan of increases for '23 to '27 at 8% a year and then going down to 3% a year. Once we were able to get a higher rate of growth in the system and cover the capital, we had a lower plan of future increases. And then we also identified an alternative plan that delayed the increases until '26 and '27, when we started to incur the debt service and O and M costs for that, and then the same future indexing plan. And then we also identified for no rate increase scenario, how long we could go without any increases, and then what we'd have to start doing in terms of inflationary adjustments to keep pace with some of the minimal capital expenditures we included in that scenario. And so per the direction from the board at the last discussion, we ran some alternatives that factored in the rate structure changes for industrial, agricultural, those non-residential classes, as well as the updates to the miscellaneous fees that Brian mentioned. So we reran each of these scenarios to factor in that additional revenue from both of those scenarios. It's about $1.6 million is the estimate, and that represents about 2.5% of revenues. And so we updated the scenarios so that you could see the impacts to the rate plans. So for the updated baseline, we took that 2.5% all in the first year, so lowered that 4% increase to 1.5%, but then we'd have to pick up with normal indexing at the 4% level in '24 and beyond. In the scenario where we didn't have an increase in '23, we were, you know, able to then have to look at a scenario of 4.25% increases in those out-years to be able to keep pace instead of 4.5%. It's about a quarter percent less per year. For the no wastewater expansion, we distributed that half a percent per year for '23 to '27. So instead of 3.5% increases in those years, we were able to do a plan of 3% followed by the 5.5% in the out-years. In the no growth scenario, we again took those five-year plan of 2% increases down to 1.5%. In the Site B scenario, we took what was an 8% increase in the first five years down to 7.5% per year. And in the delayed scenario for Site B, we were able to reduce those two increases in '26 and '27 from 15.5 to 14 in each of those years. And in the no increase scenario, we were able to go another year without an increase, but we had to increase the index to 4%. So it does have a modest impact to the rate plans. There's different options on how we could realize the benefits in terms of taking all the benefit in the first-year increase or distributing it over a five-year period. So we kind of did these options this way to show you the impact and give you a sense of the range of options of how you could implement it and realize that. And then we did do one additional set of scenarios, which factored in the revenue from the rate structure changes, the miscellaneous fees, but then also modeled a scenario that said if in fiscal '24, when we update the system development fees, if we were to have a sewer system development fee that was based on the incremental method for all these expansion-related capital costs, and that fee was consistent with the incremental method results from the 2018 study at about $7,000, what would that do towards the future increases in that Site B scenario? And so in that scenario, we were able to have a lower plan of increases of 7% per year for Site B in the level plan. Or in the scenario where it's a delayed increases, we're able to further reduce those two increases in the out-years from 14% down to 12.5% each year. For the other scenarios, you know, those projected incremental system development fee revenues for sewer didn't necessarily make sense because there was no wastewater expansions or no growth, you know, components included in those. So I guess with that, I'll kind of pause, Brian, and see if there's any questions or clarifications you'd like to make or if the board has anything for me in terms of questions on these scenarios.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, just one question. Could you kind of summarize for us again the differences between the incremental method and the buy-in method for the, for the system development fee study?
Sure. So relative to the methods for the system development fees, you know, we generally have, you know, three options at our disposal for calculating those. The buy-in method is really based on the cost of the existing assets of the utility system. And, you know, North Carolina with state statutes, you know, those revenues using the buy-in method can be used to, you know, reimburse, you know, the system for existing costs, for improvements with capacity and for rehabilitation expenses. So it's pretty flexible in terms of how you use those. In the incremental cost method, it's very much forward-looking and the system development fees are based on planned capital improvements that expand the capacity of the system. And so those revenues, if they're based on that method, are generally intended to be used for expansion-related projects in the CIP and to pay debt service that's incurred for those expansions. And the third approach is a combined, that combines those two approaches to come up with a weighted cost that, you know, again, is intended to be first used for expansion-related projects or debt service on those expansion-related projects, but can also be used for reimbursement of existing costs for improvement with capacity as well as for rehabilitation of those types of improvements.
So in other words, if a, let's just say hypothetically, if an existing Board of County Commissioners embraces a plan for capital projects and is looking at the incremental method, but a future board backs off or jettisons those plans for capital projects, what may have made sense in terms of an incremental method for system development fees might no longer make sense? Is that correct?
I think that's a fair statement, and that's, you know, why I think Brian may have mentioned this at the last workshop as well, that when we do these system development fee studies, we'll calculate the fees under all three methods. And so that way they're available such that if those types of plans do change, you do need to make an adjustment, you'd have the ability and have the study to go to to support, you know, changing the basis of the fee, because I think it would be very difficult and potentially risky to continue to implement a fee based on the incremental method if you're no longer planning to do those improvements.
That's what I thought. Thank you very much.
And for clarification, you can, jurisdictions can actually choose a different methodology for water and a different methodology for sewer. They do not have to be the same. So that is also something to take into consideration when we have the study done. We can look at all of those individually for water, individually for sewer, make that decision at that time.
Also correct, yeah.
So Andy, thank you very much. I really appreciate you taking time out of your day to meet with us virtually and go over these items. I'm not sure if the board has the additional questions. I know you have some, another call to make, so I'm certainly not going to hold you on the line, because I know you've got another meeting to go to. If there aren't any questions for Andy...
I do have one question, Brian. I just want to break this down to layman terms. In other words, with no future sewer plant on, on the plans, there will be no chance to raise the system development fees because we have to have a cost to tie it to it. I think what Vice Chairman Williams brought up was an excellent point that I hadn't thought of, but...
So, and Andy can chime in if I say this incorrectly, but the, the math, the calculation that's in the study is based on your capital. And whether or not you are adding capital or you're just doing the bare maintenance of existing facilities. And so if you do not add capital to your project, then those incremental and combined methods are likely to be less because you're not adding future expansion in order to pay for it. The buy-in method may make more sense because you're having existing facilities and what are those costs? Well, our existing facilities cost a lot less because we're not building expansion. So I can't tell you what those actual numbers are going to be. We won't know that until we have the study done. But we do know that if we take what's shown as CIP estimates, we can get at least an idea of what we think will happen. And that's why Andy and his group were able to take that, make an assumption, and build that into a possible decrease from 7.5 to 7% if the board chooses to move forward with a capital plan that incorporates all of your capital needs.
That's very well said.
Okay. Are there any more questions for Andy? Andy, thank you very much. Appreciate it, Andy and Deb. Thanks for all your help on this.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it.
So, so the next part of the discussion is, well, what do you do? What do you do with this information? How do you want to move forward? Because ultimately, the board has to adopt a budget. That budget has to include rates and fees. What are those going to be in the future and how do we accomplish what we need to do for capital or what do we do for our capital needs? So what I wanted to show you here is a snapshot of if, if the board were to make a decision to first balance your rates, okay? That's the thing I brought up earlier, where water customers are not paying what it costs to serve, sewer customers are paying more. So if you balanced it, what would that be? And if you then added a 7% rate increase, if you did, what would that impact have? And so I've got here just a snapshot. This is for a standard water user, 3/4-inch residential meter is what that stands for at the top. Then when it says sewer, all sewer customers pay the same amount. We don't distinguish between, that's a volumetric number. We don't distinguish between whether you're industrial, commercial. Your size may dictate the cost increase or as far as your, the, not the volumetric rate, but the base rate. But the volumetric rate's the same, that's what it is. So what you've got here is current rates, you've got a base fee for water, and you've got your tiers. If you were to balance the rate for water customers, the increase for the first tier is going to go up roughly about 49 cents per 1,000 gallons. If you did a rate increase for 7% on top of that, because that's what it would be, you're talking about $4.27 per 1,000 gallons for that first tier of water. Now, what we've done is show you what that impact is for every one of those tiers, but it also shown you that for sewer customers, they actually would see a decrease because currently they are paying more than the cost of service for sewer. So right now sewer rates are $8.55 per 1,000 gallons. Under the balancing, it would drop from $7, drop to $7.20, then the rate increase would then increase that up to $7.71. So they are actually realizing a reduction. And if the board were further to make a decision to create categories for agriculture as well as a unified industrial rate, the agricultural rate would essentially go to $4.43. And the reason why I show 4.43 is what you have here is currently ag plays this non-residential 4.85 rate. The shift or the balancing would take it to 5.54, and a 20% reduction would make that 4.43. That's why they're realizing a 20%, that's how they're realizing a 20% reduction, because this is the cost to serve. That 5.54 is the cost to serve for that. Same thing for your industrial customers. Currently, they're paying 4.85 for a non-residential rate. We don't have a per se industrial rate. That balancing would make it 5.54, but because industrial has different peaking factors and along, as well as the 7% increase, their, their rate proposed would be 6.75 for water. But you see a significant reduction for those customers in their sewer rates. It would actually be 5.50. Same thing, current rate's 8.55, but based on the, the cost of service as well as the increase, it would be 5.50.
Brian, they're not going to see a cost total, they're not going to see an increase on their total bill.
It will really depend on how much water they send to the sewer. So you're absolutely right. If they use 100,000 gallons of water and 100,000 gallons goes through the sewer, their bill is going to be fairly similar. There will be some change, obviously. Now, if they're a heavy water user, but they don't send a lot of sewer through the system, that's different. They are going to see an increase because they're, they're, they're using, they're bringing water in, but they're not necessarily sending it to the system. So it really depends on whether it goes through our sewer system.
Well, I thought sewer was based on water meter rates.
Again, you're, you're right, absolutely, but not every, not all water goes through the sewer system, but you're right.
They're going to be charged for it, whether it goes to it or not.
Yes, sir. You're accurate on that. I'm sorry, I didn't clarify that. The other thing to keep in mind is that we have a current customer who has a singular rate. That, that rate is specific to that customer. If they were to be combined with the industrial rate, they would see a fairly significant increase in their yearly costs, because currently their rate is, is much lower than the actual rate as well as the cost to serve that, that customer as well. So I want to make that clear. There will be at least one customer who will have some fairly large increases to their, their costs. But this is about, are they paying what it really costs to serve that industry? That's, that's really the question here, and whether or not the board feels that that's necessary.
And I believe in this instance, that customer has had the same rate for, I think, six years, about six years.
I think you're correct. I don't want to commit to that, but I believe you're accurate on that, yes. So...
Brian?
Yes, sir.
That, that particular customer, you made a reference to the cost of water. What's the delta between what they're paying and the cost of water? Are they paying less than the cost of water?
Yes, they're not paying what it actually costs to, to serve them. That is correct, yes. So the cost of water that we have to pay and that it costs for us to serve that actual business is more than what they're paying. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, unfortunately, I do.
Yeah. And, and, you know, some of that is again, part of this whole balancing issue. I don't know that at the time that that was done, that that was the case. They may very well have been paying close to the cost of service when those rates were discussed. But over time, as rates change, as, as our cost to run our plants and things change, that gets out of balance. And so I don't know that that was specifically intentional, that they pay lower than what it actually costs for us to provide them the, the water, but that's happened over time.
Well, I don't have any problem with adjusting. I'm concerned because of the economic impact of hitting a customer like that.
Certainly.
I mean, they asked for a rate, we gave it to them. Shame on us. But the thing about it is, is what we have to think about, what's going to happen to the economic impact and to the people that are employed there.
Yes, sir.
I don't want a situation like Outfit left Charlotte because they wouldn't work with them and went to Albemarle. We don't need that. So I'd like to see that part excluded till we have a better understanding in our calculation.
I certainly understand what, the manager obviously will have to present you a budget. You don't have to adopt the budget and then not plan, plan to adopt the budget until June 13th, so we have some time to work out those things, obviously. I understand, that's why I pointed that out. It is, it will be, if the board chooses to go in this direction, a significant cost increase for that particular customer. And, and we're sensitive to that, we understand that. Just be aware, though, that... they would see a fairly significant increase in their yearly costs because currently their rate is much lower than the actual rate as well as the cost to serve that customer as well. So I want to make that clear. There will be at least one customer who will have some fairly large increases to their costs. But this is about, are they paying what it really costs to serve that industry? That's really the question here. And whether or not the board feels that that's necessary.
And I believe in this instance, that customer has had the same rate for, I think, six years, about six years.
I think you're correct. I don't want to commit to that, but I believe you're accurate on that, yes. So.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
That particular customer, you made a reference to the cost of water. What's the delta between what they're paying and the cost of water? Are they paying less than the cost of water?
Yes, they're not paying what it actually costs to serve them. That is correct, yes. So the cost of water that we have to pay and that it costs for us to serve that actual business is more than what they're paying. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, unfortunately, I do.
Yeah. And, you know, some of that is, again, part of this whole balancing issue. I don't know that at the time that that was done, that that was the case. They may very well have been paying close to the cost of service when those rates were discussed. But over time, as rates change, as our cost to run our plants and things change, that gets out of balance. And so I don't know that that was specifically intentional, that they pay lower than what it actually costs for us to provide them the water. But that's happened over time.
Well, I don't have any problem with adjusting. I'm concerned because of the economic impact of hitting a customer like that.
Certainly.
I mean, they asked for a rate, we gave it to them. Shame on us. But the thing about it is, is what we have to think about, what's going to happen to the economic impact and to the people that are employed there.
Yes, sir.
I don't want a situation like Outfit left Charlotte because they wouldn't work with them and went to Albemarle. We don't need that. So I'd like to see that part excluded till we have a better understanding in our calculation.
I certainly understand what... The manager obviously will have to present you a budget. You don't have to adopt the budget and then not plan to adopt the budget until June 13th. So we have some time to work out those things, obviously. I understand, that's why I pointed that out. It is, it will be, if the board chooses to go in this direction, a significant cost increase for that particular customer. And we're sensitive to that. We understand that. Just be aware, though, that I think at a minimum we should consider, what does it really cost for us to serve our customers? And not necessarily... Economics is something we always have to take into consideration. But we also have to take into consideration that other customers are subsidizing that reduction in cost because it has to be made up somewhere.
Mr. Chairman. Brian, any, this balancing would take place when?
September 1st. Thank you for pointing that out. So we're so close to the end of the fiscal year. We really can't meet our, what we think is appropriate for noticing our customers, giving them information on being prepared for this. So we would not make this take effect until September 1st. That gives us time to notice our customers, make sure they're all aware of the changes that are happening. And again, between now and June 13th, when the board is set to adopt a budget, we can certainly have some discussion on what changes you may or may not want to see to rates for either a specific customer or a unified rate as far as the industrial. I will point out that for the truly industrial customers, not the customer that has their own rate, they're likely to see, as Commissioner Rate pointed out, no change or maybe even a minor reduction in their costs. Because, again, their sewer costs were so much higher in the past, they're realizing a pretty significant reduction in their sewer rates, even with an increase in the water rates. So if you add those two together, they're actually going to see virtually no change or even less cost for them. That's not true of that one other customer. They would have significant cost increases.
Brian, based, excuse me, based on that, do we provide assistance? Or let's just say, for instance, industrial customers, you go to them and you say, "We're fixing to raise your rates X", and they're using 100,000 gallons. And they go, "Whoa, we need to cut back." Do we provide assistance or consultation or anything whereby they can possibly retreat, reuse some of that water so they reduce their water needs over time?
So we, per se, don't necessarily provide assistance for that. We're certainly, you know, willing to work with them on that. Most of those companies do look for those options already. I mean, it's all about cost of, you know, of their goods and services and their profit margin. So at some point in time, the tip, the scale tips, and they have to figure out, like, can I save enough money by implementing a pre-treatment method or something else that reduces my needs? We certainly will assist as much as we can, but we don't drive that. That's really the customer that drives that.
Brian, also, on your water agricultural rate, is that for a metered connection?
That is for metered connection. However, what we would recommend, because this doesn't show on here, is for bulk water, that anyone that qualifies as an agricultural exemption, that means they're in the Present Use Value Program or they qualify as an actual agricultural use, that we would provide that rate to them as well as anyone who has a metered rate. Now, that would not apply to businesses that are using bulk water that don't have the ag exemption. They would play the bulk water rate and what that would be. And that's significantly higher than that. But we would recommend we actually allow ag users of the bulk program to have that proposed rate.
Well, we have been talking about bulk water and problems with bulk water for quite a while. And we're promised that it'd come back with a solution for that. Meter is one thing. Nothing else is addressing the bulk water, you know?
Well, we did bring, you know, some opportunities. And of course, we met with our ag community about bulk water. The challenge we have with the bulk water program, and again, this is board direction, is we have a potential solution. It's not inexpensive. And ultimately, we got some concern back from our ag community about how that would potentially be an issue for them to be able to access that bulk water. Currently, we have bulk water hydrants spread throughout the county that you can use. If we were to go to the method that we studied, which is a basically a filling station, we really can't put that many filling stations around the county quickly. They're rather expensive. So we could only do four at the most. And the ag community has some serious concerns about how could they access bulk water with not having enough areas for them to access. So I understand your concern. It's really, what we're going to need from the board is direction on whether or not you want to go with a bulk water program, which is a filling station program. But understand, the ag community may have challenges with being able to utilize that bulk water. We don't have a simple solution for that right now. We just don't.
Well, I understand what you're saying about the ag community, but bulk water's problem is, not ag, is for a major part.
I don't disagree with you.
And that water, we pay for no matter what.
Yes, sir.
And drives the rates up.
I'm with you. So we have a solution. It's just, does the board want that solution? And are you willing to put that amount of expense into it in order to make that work? It's, I think we programmed an estimate of roughly $1.5 million to be able to do that because we have to buy land, we have to put the stations in. Is that correct, Young, with one and a half or two? One to $1.5 million to put four stations in. That's buying land, that's putting the station in, all the technology and infrastructure you need to run those because they're not manned, they're unmanned stations. And then you would have four of those that people could access, and they'd have a card reader or however you set it up. But is that something the board wants? That's something that we would have to implement. It is, that's the cost at this point in time that we estimate for that program.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Brian, do we have any customers that pay a lower rate than the single customer you're talking about? For example, is there a town or a municipality that has?
So we have wholesale rates, yes, sir. We have what we call a wholesale rate, which is basically a contract rate for Wingate as well as Monroe.
And it's a lower rate than that?
Yes.
Give me an example.
I don't know the actual rate for the city of Monroe or for Wingate off the top of my head. They are lower than these volumetric rates. I don't know them off the top of my head. They shift based on capital needs. So it's built into the contract. There's a capital cost. We can recoup those capital costs. But I don't know those off the top of my head.
So I guess I would say if we're not, if we're losing money at the single rate for the one, would we not be losing money at that lower rate for the municipalities?
Absolutely. And that's, and I think when Andy did his presentation, he showed that. He showed that the cost to serve Wingate and the cost to serve Monroe is, we're not generating the revenue based on the cost to serve, absolutely. Understand, though, those are contractual rates. Those are not built into this. This is a specific written contract that you have with those entities that obviously can be renegotiated when the contracts are up for renewal. But right now, we're under those contracts, and that's what we have to obligate ourselves to. Now, I will say, in Monroe's circumstance, you know, we also get a fairly reasonable deal on sewer compared to probably what their cost of service is. So there was a give and take on that particular one. They got water, we got sewer. But in the end, is their deal better than our deal? I couldn't say for sure whether they got a better deal on water than we got on sewer. But we did get something out of that contractual arrangement as well.
Could that be looked at? And, I mean, if we're going to look at it for one customer?
Absolutely. And again, what it boils down to is, is there an appetite by both boards to renegotiate the contract? When does that contract expire? When do we do that? We are currently in discussions with Wingate to, for their contract because their contract is close to expiration. We will have to renegotiate that anyway. Monroe, I don't think we're as close on their contract timeframe.
So another question is that when we go to switch to Yadkin, we're supposed to save us some money compared to Anson, I guess?
I think the cost for us to actually produce the water is lower than the cost for Anson to produce it on that one.
So what happens if we renegotiate all this and the cost is lower? Then are we going to look at it again? Or what's the?
I think that...
What if we were doing it there at Yadkin and it's lower cost? Should we not maybe look at what the potential cost is there and see what we need to go from there?
I don't think that's a bad idea. Ultimately, what it boils down to is how long do we negotiate the contract for? If we negotiate it for two years, 10 years, whatever that is, that's when you would want to reevaluate it. You could always say, "I want a one-year contract", and reevaluate it at the end of the contract, one year. You could do that. That's certainly appropriate.
And are we currently supplying that one company with Catawba water?
No, that is Anson water.
Right now, it would be Catawba with the emergency.
Well, yeah, under the emergency, sorry. But the standard water comes from Anson County. That is what serves that particular customer.
Right. So how much more, is it more or less with the Catawba water?
Anson water? I don't know how much more Anson water's cost is versus Catawba water. I believe it is more. I don't know how much more it is.
Two years ago, Anson water was $1.85, and they were working on an increase.
I believe we were under a dollar, I believe, per thousand.
Catawba was $0.71.
Yeah.
And $0.39 to push it up here.
Right.
But Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, we will not be able to send Yadkin water to Monroe until...
That is correct. At the current time, under our IBT, we cannot send or sell water to Monroe under the current IBT.
That's something to work on, but we can't do it.
Right. There is an opportunity for us to discuss, you know, how we can do that in the future. That doesn't preclude us from selling them additional water from Catawba. We just have to make sure we can manage our IBT on the Catawba side. So we obviously can look at selling them additional water from Catawba, and that's something that we've discussed. How do we accomplish that? How do we make that work? So that's always possible.
We could go up to $5 million to Monroe if we could replace all that that's in the...
Yeah, as long as we can manage the IBT.
Right.
But from Catawba, then we can sell them additional water. It's really about managing that IBT. Now, again, understand, the ultimate goal, ultimate goal, was that Yadkin water would serve Yadkin, Catawba water would serve Catawba. You may have a little bit that goes over, like it is now. We sell water to Monroe, which is Catawba water. We sell that. They get 1.99 million gallons. It's just under the 2 million gallon requirement to have an IBT. So they use that when they need to. We could increase that as well. But we have to be able to make sure we never go over that 5 million gallons of water from Catawba over into Yadkin. Because if we go over it, then we have to be able to bring some back to be able to make sure we always stay at no more than 5 million gallons that we push over the ridge.
So with the Poplin Road pump station, where we can send 2 million gallons a day back, how much, are we looking at expanding that? Can it be expanded? And does the equalization tank have anything to...
Good question. So the ability to actually send more is extremely expensive. We're not looking to expand the ability to pump more over. All the EQ tank does is spreads the timeout for when we pump. So instead of pumping everything when everybody's using it at 5 o'clock in the afternoon, the EQ tank will hold it until 3 o'clock in the morning, and we can send it over at 3 o'clock in the morning. So it gives us some flexibility. It doesn't really gain us an additional flow. If you were to say, "I want to send actually more", "I really want to expand the capacity of the pump station", the real constraining issue is the pipe system to get it to 12 Mile. We'd have to run a parallel line to add to it, or we'd have to upsize the existing line, which would be really, really expensive. It's not, you can't do it. It's just you, it'd be really expensive to do.
But once we bring Yadkin water into that area, the Crooked Creek plant that's there existing now could take the Yadkin water, which would allow for some of that capacity. Then, again, that too, that capacity that used to be Catawba water could go to Monroe.
So right now, Crooked is in the Yadkin. So it's being served by, you know, Yadkin. Poplin is where the Catawba water comes back over. The ultimate goal was that that whole area would ultimately be served by Yadkin water. And so if you're not pushing water over into the Catawba, you have more water to use for potentially selling to Monroe or whatever else you need to use it for. So the goal ultimately was to try and reduce your need for Catawba water across the Yadkin line. That's always been the long-term goal of the system. You will realize some cost savings by doing that, and you'll realize some additional flows by doing that.
Commissioner Simpson.
Brian, with regard to, in an emergency situation, we don't switch rates.
No, we do not.
To a different water source.
We just switch, yes, absolutely. That's a good point because I'm glad you brought that up. We have two interconnects with the city of Charlotte in our 880 pressure zone and our 935 pressure zone, which is really in the Stylings area and now sort of in the Weddington-Marvin area. Those interconnects allow us to utilize Charlotte's water when we need to. Now, there's a caveat to that. They have a different disinfection system. They use chlorine. We use chloramine? Is that correct? Chloramine. So we can't just flip the switch and say, you know, here you're getting it. We have to, again, notify the customers. There's things that we have to do before we start using Charlotte water. And then you don't just use it for a few days because, number one, it's expensive. Number two, it's really much, it's a pain to switch that disinfecting system, you know, in our system, valve everything off. So you're going to use it for several weeks or months in order to make it make sense. And we're going to pay a lot more for it because Charlotte's water rates are a lot higher than our rates are. So to your point, we don't turn around and charge customers a higher fee because we're now bringing water from Charlotte to actually serve that area because of whatever issue. We charge them the same rate that we charge everybody because that's our rate. That is just built into our calculation that we may need that water at some point in the future.
And the same would be true of Catawba to Anson.
That is correct. And we do use that water more frequently because when we have high water usage needs in the 12 Mile Creek area, we will, can, several times a year, use that Lancaster water contract where we can get that additional flow from them when we need that.
One other thing I wanted to add on to Commissioner Helms. And you made the point that the ag advisory board has met on numerous occasions. Young has been there a couple of times. You have met with him. And a couple of things from that. One is the cost of some of the things that we've looked at would far exceed the need. Sometimes the...
Yes.
The best option is no option, is to do nothing sometimes.
Sure.
I think we've had a lot of discovery from that in terms of who our users are, whether they're actually sourcing their water, and the fact that they really have difficulty even, a lot of them accessing the water. So the other point I wanted to make was, I believe in our information, we saw that it would be a net, almost a net zero to lower this, to provide an agricultural rate. It's really not going to impact the use of the rates overall. And I would say that agriculture is a little bit unique in that most of those producers are price takers as opposed to price makers. It's a little bit different. You can't add to the cost of the house when it's a load of soybeans. If soybeans, $4 a bushel, they're $4 a bushel. And you either sell it or smell it. So our agriculture is important to us. And I think anything we can do from that standpoint is a benefit.
Yes, sir. Good, good point. I want to clarify what Commissioner Simpson is saying. So what we've determined is that the usage of water in our system by the agricultural community is low based on the information and the data that we have. It is not a significant... based on the information and the data that we have. It is not a significant water user. So, by providing them with an ag rate, it is not affecting the rates for all the rest of the customers. And it would be completely different if they were a heavy water user. It would not make sense to have a lower ag rate, because it would affect all the rates of all the other customers, but that is not the case with ag. They're such a low water user of our total system. They don't impact the rates of all the other customers. And what the Commissioner also brought up is, in our evaluation of a bulk water program, while we understand that we certainly don't want people to take water from the system and not be paid for it, bulk water is also very similar in that it is a very low amount of water compared to the system as a whole. So, the revenue we generate from a bulk water program is relatively low, and the amount of water that, that we know goes out of the system is relatively low compared to the, the system. So, if we were to implement a bulk water program, the cost to do it, to repay yourself is gonna take a much more longer time to repay yourself for it. Not saying that's a bad thing. It's a philosophy that the board has to tell us you want. If your philosophy is, "We don't care if it costs more. It's the right thing to do." That's fine. That's what we'll do. But it, it does cost more than what we generate in revenue, and our return on investment will take some time for us to, to make up, as long as you know that and understand that.
Commissioner Simpson.
Um, just out of curiosity, uh, with the lightning strikes and all the problems Anson County has been having, uh, how are they providing water to their people?
Have no idea. We were more concerned about how we, we supplied water for our customers, so I'm not really sure how they're providing water for their customers.
Is it, there's, is there a, for like, a dual plan or redundancy there that they have that maybe one size out?
It's my understanding that a, that a major pump went down, and the pump is normally how they get the water to us. Uh, it's also probably how they get the water to other parts of their system, and they were having to essentially, um, go use a pump out of another part of their system, sewer system or whatever, to be able to basically take that pump and use it while they're waiting for a new pump to be delivered, but it's not enough for it to help us with, with water for our customers. It just made more sense that we switch over to Catawba water.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, I remember about two years ago, I also asked about sending more water to Twelve Mile through the Poplin Pump Station, and at that time, I think the estimate was a hundred and forty-five million to, uh-
It, it's expensive, and I will tell you, whatever number we gave you is wrong, because those costs have increased significantly since that timeframe. But the, the, the cost is that we would have to acquire property. We'd have to put in a pipe, and right now, we all know pipe costs are excessive as far as cost, and we'd have to go in essentially and parallel a line where there's already one, and you're not gonna make people happy, where they're already used to the line that's there. Now, you're gonna tear up their backyards and whatever. It, it would be a major undertaking, and not something we would recommend. Now, again, I just can't do it. You can, it's just what's your appetite for spending that kind of money in order to send additional flow over?
The point then and the point now was, it's, it's che-, it's as cheap to build a plant than to try to pump more to Twelve Mile.
The, the ultimate 2016 master plan anticipated that if you wanted to serve the Yadkin area with sewer, it was less expensive in the long run to have a new facility versus trying to just pump that back over into Twelve Mile. Again, there's all kinds of ways to do it, but it anticipated that cost was lower over the long term.
Thank you.
One question for me on, on, on those items. So, I wanna talk about recommendations, and again, you know, this is, this is where we're, we're hoping we get some direction from the board. First off, need to understand what you want to do about the balancing of the rates. You know, do you want to balance the current rates to where the water customers are paying the, their appropriate cost of service, and the sewer customers are paying their appropriate cost of service? It's the first thing. Second thing is, do you want to implement an ag rate, as we've shown you? And do you want in, to implement an industrial rate, which would include all industrial customers, not just single some out? Or do you want to do something different? And then, the other items there are, well, what rate increase or none is the board, um, looking for, for your system? Um, we've shown you multiple options. Staff would recommend, from a utility perspective, that the, um, site B option, which includes all of our capital needs over the period of time in the capital plan, um, which is a seven percent rate increase over five years. That, um, would obviously be a heavy lift. We understand that, but that would be the staff's recommendation. And then, after that, um, you know, how do we handle our system development fees? What do we do as far as the capital projects we include in our system development fee ordinance? So, those are things that we're gonna need some direction from on the board. As I said, staff would recommend you consider a five-year rate plan, that the board make a decision that whatever rate option you choose, whether it's zero, whether it's four percent, seven percent, that we have a five-year rate commitment. And the reason why I say that is, number one, the model shows what we need in order to be able to serve the capital needs of the program. Number two, our rating agencies look at how committed are you to meeting those requirements for your bond test and for your revenue needs? And so, they will, they will see very, if you commit to something, they understand that you are showing that you are actually trying to accomplish what your capital plan shows. You can do anything in between, obviously. We're just saying that we think that's something you should consider. And then ultimately, we recommend that you do create an agricultural rate, and we do recommend that you create an industrial rate. So, questions, comments, direction? How do you want to handle this?
I guess you need to walk us through what you want us to decide.
Yes, sir. So, and, and this would be my first request. My first request, that the board agree that we're gonna balance the rates for water and sewer customers. That would be the, the first action that I would say the board, and not action, the direction, because you're gonna have to take action when it comes to adoption, adopting the budget. This isn't adopting anything. This has given us direction to build into the budget. So, if we have direction that we're gonna balance our, our rates, that would be my first request.
Okay, and that'll require a vote to give you direction.
Well, just the, the board has given us direction that you, that you want, you want to go in that direction.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we, you're asking for a five-year, um, level rate.
Well, well, I, at first, I would, without doing the level rate, the first thing I would say is the board interested in balancing the rates as they are, as they are first, because that, that needs to be built into this.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and it's for five years and then it drops.
Well, the, the balancing is really the, is, is the current rate structure. It's not the five-year part of it. It's actually bringing the current rates in balance. So, that's a one-year thing. I'm balancing rates. That's all I'm doing. That's where I showed you, where is it? This right here. So, if you look after, it says after balancing, you'll see that water tier says 399, and then after the increase, 427. First off, is the board want to balance rates? And if you did nothing, if you said, "We're not, we're not increasing rates after that," that would be the rate that would be adjusted for all customers, but there would be no additional rate increases to cover your revenue needs. That's the first question I'm asking. Do you want to balance your rates for water and sewer customers? Then after that, I'm gonna ask you, do you want to increase your rates to cover your capital needs, which is where the seven percent shows? So, there are two different directions. So, did that?
Yes, okay. Well, I'll, my motion will be to balance the rates for one year, because to think that costs have not gone up and will not continue to go up is ludicrous. So, that's the motion. Any discussion? Commissioner Simpson.
Brian, I believe in the last few days that the information was shared that, how long has it been since we actually looked at some of the cost of these?
It's been since 2011 since we actually looked at our cost of service. And I had to, actually had to eat crow, because I said I didn't think we'd done a cost of service analysis. We did back in 2011, so it's been since 2011.
No, nobody wants to impact anybody's rates, but at the same time, it's, this, for me, this is about fairness and making tho-, uh, making you pay for what you're actually getting.
Right.
And so, I'd certainly be in favor of the motion.
Commissioner, hey, um-
I also am fair of the motion, but I, what I would ask is that if you'll email the board, take tier one, two, and three, and you, we talked about it, it's gonna basically be a balance in between sewer and water. And give us an example. I'm sure you have an average for each one of those tiers.
Sure.
Because your rate also depends on how much water you use.
It does, and, and that's a good point. I, I don't have it here, um, but just to give you, uh, an example, if you had an average, if you had a customer that used 5,500 gallons, that's a residential customer, and that's considered an average customer, okay? If you did, and I'm, I'm just gonna go to the, I'm not gonna do the balancing. I'm gonna go all the way through the seven percent rate increase, because that's what I have in my mind. That's what I remember. If you did a balancing and a seven percent rate increase for that water customer, they would see an additional eight dollars per month on their water bill. If they were a water and sewer customer, they would see a, an additional dollar and seventy cent increase on their bill, because again, their sewer bill went down. Their water bill went up, but their sewer bill went down. So, if they are combined customer, water and sewer, and they were, use 5,500 gallons per month, which is essentially an average customer, they would see less than a two-dollar increase in their bill. If you were just a water-only user, you would see more of an increase, because you've been paying less than what you should have been paying, but it would be an eight-dollar per month increase, essentially. And that's an estimate, obviously. It's based on how much water you use, how much sewer you use. And then we have sewer-only customers, those who have a flat rate. They would actually see a reduction as well, about six dollars per month that the sewer-only customers would see in their bill. So, that, that's an average residential user. That's not an average industrial user or commercial user. That's simply our, which are predominantly our, most our customer base are residential users. Does that help you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, in, in order to, uh, support fairness, and I also think in order to, um, just have better economics, I mean, better align the costs of service with the, um, rate revenues, uh, for that, uh, service, uh, I'll be supporting this motion, which, again, just to recap, I understand to be giving direction to staff to prepare new rate schedules as we, um, look to, um, uh, plan for the new fiscal year. Thank you.
Commissioner Rushing.
Brian, in a meeting that we had before, you said that if the rates go down, uh, that, or if the rates go up, there's a potential for the system development fees to go down in the study. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So, what the, the board had asked us to look at an allocation strategy. So, if you were to do a, um, a rate with a capital recovery cost included in that rate, and that's, I'm being specific, a capital recovery cost built into that rate, based on some allocation agreement that you have with your municipal jurisdictions, then that revenue has to be built into your system development fees, because it's specific to capital. And you can't double-charge current customers, as well as new customers, that additional revenue for capital recovery. Now, if you simply raise your rates, that's not the same thing, because you're not identifying that it is specific for capital recovery. So, I want to clarify that. It's only if you have an allocation agreement, and then you specifically spell out that this is a capital recovery cost.
And so, I'm still looking at the seven percent rate increase and trying to figure out, if you're lowering the sewer, are, are you still just doing a seven percent on your water customers, or is it higher on your water customers?
So, so, good question. So, understand that this balancing is an increase. Uh, there's no way around it. The, the current water customers are not paying the cost of service. So, if all you did, you didn't do any of this at all, this, none of this seven percent, you are technically doing an increase in the rate for a water customer, all right? So, they, they would realize an increase, and I don't have that off the top of my head, but it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen percent there, because, again, you're going up from 350 in this range to, uh, by forty, uh, forty-nine cents. So, it's a, it's a, it's an increase, because you're balancing that. Now, if you are a combined customer, you would actually see a corresponding decrease in your sewer rate. Yeah.
So, if I could just add, um, when Brian talks about rate balancing, it doesn't actually generate any more revenue for the utility. All it is doing is shifting who's paying what. Right now, wastewater cus-, wastewater customers are subsidizing water customers, and all it, all of the balancing does is eliminate that subsidy. So, the water folks are paying what they should be paying for water, and sewer folks are paying what they should be paying for sewer. And so, the net result is, um, shifting of who pays what, but it doesn't generate more revenue for the utility.
And, and that's a good point. I think what Commissioner Rushing was trying to get at, though, is a water customer will see a, they'll, they'll see a rate increase. They will see that, because they, I mean, that's what it is ultimately. Because if they are water-only, I'm a water-only customer. I don't have sewer. I will see an increase in my water bill.
You're saying that's about fifteen percent?
It, that, that's if you just balance it. That's roughly about what it is, because you're balancing it.
And then another seven percent on top of that.
And then you would do an increase on top of that. Yeah, absolutely. I'm trying to be tru-, fully transparent here. As Hung said, though, the goal of balancing is not to generate additional revenue. The goal is to, the revenue stays the same, but the customers are paying their cost of share. That's what, that's the goal. It's much like the miscellaneous fees that we had. We hadn't done a miscellaneous fees, um, reevaluation in 25 years. Well, that meant those folks were not paying what it really cost to put a tap in, and the board agreed for us to sort of ramp that up over time.
So, you're, that cost includes capital projects, though. For example, Yadkin project.
So, the balancing does not. No, sir.
It does not include like the-
No, that, what, the seven percent, that is really where we're talking about the capital needs for all of those projects and the site B, as well as everything else that's built into that. The balancing is not addition, that's not generating additional revenue. That's keeping revenue essentially the same. It's just shifting the burden of who's paying for it and how they're paying for it.
So, and I apologize, but, so we're looking at the water customers paying higher rates, the water-only customers paying higher rates to, um, balance everything out, and then seven percent more on top of that to build a sewer plant.
To build all the capital projects within your plan.
That, that won't really benefit them, because they're water-only customers.
Well, I, I mean, again, that, that is the case of our system always. Every year that we do anything, people that are water-only customers aren't benefiting from a sewer plant necessarily. However, they do benefit from the water plant that's being built, or any of the improvements that go from that, and that's going to be commonplace. Now, our system is made up of mostly combined customers. Out of the fifty-five-plus thousand customers that we have, roughly about fourteen thousand are water customers only. The rest are combined customers. See, that's a, that's not a small number, but it's relatively low compared to the full amount of your customer base.
And, and part of your customers are on a water source now that is more expensive than it will be later.
I'm sorry, but I'm-
Anson County water customers.
Oh, Anson, yes.
Uh, it's on a higher rate already, and, but it will be going to a lower rate in the coming years.
The lower cost, not necessarily a rate. Understand the cost.
Is, is there gonna be an adjustment by- Is, is there going to be an adjustment back?
Well, again, this is a system approach, so...
If I could clarify, Mr. Rushing, all the commissioners, so our water customers pay one rate. It doesn't matter where they get their source of water from. It doesn't matter whether it's Anson, whether it's Catawba Water, or even when we temporarily put them on Charlotte Water. Whether you live near Marshville, or Wingon, or, you know, in Indian Trail, or Weddington, everyone pays the same water rate. So it doesn't matter where your source of water is. So I, I think your question is that we differentiate. What I was picking away is, if you're on Anson Water, you're paying a different water rate than if you're on Catawba Water, and that's not the case.
Right.
It's just one rate for everybody.
I understand that. But when you lower the cost of the water, where is it reflected in the benefit to the people here?
Well, I mean, ultimately, that will be part of how, how we generate revenues. And so when we look at, you know, our future capital plans, we'll have, we'll have a better idea of how much that plant really costs to operate. Because right now, we're making assumptions for how much the Yadkin plant is going to cost to operate, based on what we know with the Catawba Plant, what we know. When it's operating, we'll know how much it costs to operate it, and we'll build that into what are our expenses and what are our revenues. And that will drive ultimately what your rates need to be. I'm, I'm not going to tell you that the rates can't go down. We won't know that until we are running that plant, we know how much it costs to run it, and then you can really look at, well, are we charging more than we need to charge to, for our system? You may be. The board can always consider reducing rates if we are generating enough revenue to cover all our capital needs as well as our expenses. But we can't tell you without a fact, by, you know, with fact today, is it going to be significantly lower? We just don't know the answer to that.
Brian, if I could add one more thing, Mr. Rushing, thank you for the clarification. One thing that might help you all is, you know, once, you know, so we lasted the cost of service study back in 2019, 2018, 2019. It is something that we think we should be doing regularly. So we're not going to wait another decade before we do another cost of service study. So, you know, once the water plant's built, once some of the capital projects are done, and we have a better idea of what it costs to actually produce water at Yadkin versus Anson, we, we will do another cost of service study, and we'll be, before you, again, doing the same sort of thing, balancing out rates to take into account what our actual cost to produce water at Yadkin is versus buying it from Anson. So if there is a cost savings to customers, we'll pass, certainly pass that along to them.
Yep.
Commissioner Sampson.
Young, maybe you, maybe you know this off the top of your head, I'm not going to put you on the spot. But how would you say that the Catawba Water Treatment Plant relates with in terms of the cost of producing water, or cost of wa, of water to Union County relative to some of other, some of the other systems throughout the state?
Well, I can't speak for throughout the state, but I will say that the Catawba Water Plant is a very efficient, well-run plant. The cost of water for us per thousand, excuse me, per thousand gallons is, I think it's going up to like 90 cents. It is, it is a very efficient plant for us. And so our cost of water from them is, it's cheap.
Right. And my only point to say that is, it, it, for me, it would be logical that when we own a new plant, and we control our cost of production, that we're going to have a much cheaper water source over the long term, similar to the, what Catawba Water's costing to serve the Yadkin Basin. That, that, that would be my logical assumption. I could be wrong, but my point to Mr. Rushing is that I would, I would hope that we potentially would see the potential to lower rates in the future. How far out in the future, I don't know, but...
We don't know that answer either, but I, again, I think it, our goal is to be transparent with all the information, whether it is positive or negative, so you can make an informed decision. And if we feel that we're generating more revenue than is necessary, then we'll show you that. And you can make that decision that, well, we don't need that much revenue based on current conditions, therefore, we can rate adjust for. Commissioner Rushing brought this up last week, and it's a good point, that we give you estimates on the cost of what it takes to build a project, and we're wrong. And those numbers sometimes are, are off significantly. And so our goal is to try and give you a worst-case scenario. Now, understand, what we don't control is what that worst-case scenario will be in the future. We're making a guess of what it will be in the future. But if we give you a worst-case scenario, and we are way over what it really cost, well, understand, your rates were built on what that estimate was. So we really have to be mindful of, when we give you a worst-case scenario, are we being reasonable with that? Because your rates have to reflect what those costs are. So what I've talked to our staff about, and, and I've tasked them to do, is annually, we're going to go through all our estimates, and we're going to adjust those estimates and show you, hey, listen, we told you we had a $400 million capital project for the next five years, and this is what we anticipated the cost would be. Based on current conditions now, after one year, maybe it's $450, 450 million, because things have changed. Or maybe it's 380 million. We're going to do that annually to show you that if there's a change, we, we reflect that there's a change, and then we can make decisions as necessary. That's something that I think you deserve, and we need to know, because we don't want to be surprised that we had a $50 million increase in a project that we weren't trying to anticipate. Again, I can't control the future, but we can certainly give you updates for that.
I want to say something. From the day I took this seat, I have seen transparency. It's better today than it's ever been. We can either listen to our experts in their field and their management team, and every once in a while, something comes along that we may be offer a perspective, that's a better perspective. And I have seen staff do it. Lease a spotting truck versus buying a spotting truck. And I'm not making fun, I'm saying, the things that really made sense, I have seen staff consent. We can sit in here and talk about this all day. It can change December the 6th, but we have got to move forward. If we do not build a structure in there, a financing structure so the bond markets will loan us money, if the next board gets to the point of building on Site B, then it's a lost cause. We're not, we're not doing anything except setting in motion, basically, as we've been told for six months, the right course. To think that we know more than our staff, our engineers, our management people, when I have seen them, when we could prove our point that what we thought was better, they readjust, I think is just ludicrous. We cannot be smarter than the group of people that y'all have assembled here. And so I'm going to call the vote on this balancing. All in favor of it, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay. All right, so the next item would be, and I'm going to split these, do you want to implement an ag rate? So obviously, that ag rate is a, a little bit less, about 20% less than what the cost of service is. Would the board be inclined to have an ag rate?
Discussion.
Do you have a motion to approve agricultural rate? Just candidate agricultural rate.
All in favor?
Quick discussion, please.
Sir?
Discussion.
Okay.
What if the bulk user is an agriculture entity?
We would recommend, and I, and I'm taking this as direction, that we're building that, that a bulk ag user would get the rate as identified.
Are you talking about a pool filler upper stone?
No, this would be, this was someone who would qualify as an agricultural exemption. So if they were agriculturally exempt, and they used the bulk water program, they would get the rate that would be the ag rate under that bulk water program. All other bulk users would pay the, the standard bulk rate.
Okay, I'm sorry I jumped the gun there. We have a motion to approve the ag rate. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Next item, and I know Commissioner Palms had some concerns about this, and this is the industrial rate changes. This, this actually is a, would be a potential revenue increase if you were to combine that one particular industry with all industrial users. My understanding is some concerns. At the pleasure of the board, you, you tell me how you want to approach this. We can build it into the budget as is currently recommended, which is a combined industrial rate for all industrial customers, including that outlier. And then we can provide you with information about how that impact may be for that individual customer, and maybe some options. But obviously, the manager needs to have something for his budget, so it's at your pleasure, how do you want to handle that?
Discussion.
I mean, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm in favor of, just like with the prior motions, this is to give direction to staff. This isn't to set anything in stone yet. So to the extent later this gets stretched out or implemented in a, in a different way, I'm amenable to that. But I think it's very important for reasons of fairness, for reasons of adherence to policy-based rationales in the management and administration of our system, that we go ahead and give direction to staff, staff on this industrial rate change. So I will be supporting it.
You make the motion.
I do make that motion, to give direction to staff to proceed with the industrial rate change.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would, I agree with Commissioner Williams. However, I would ask that staff contact this individual customer, understand the impacts, and so we can include that in our discussion for the actual rate.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay. And then...
Just call the question or the discussion if you vote on that.
I'm sorry. All in favor of Commissioner Williams' motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Just making sure you's following along, all right, Richard?
And, and last but not least, and of course, this is the one that's, is the heaviest lift, is, is an actual rate and a, and a rate plan for how to accomplish this over the next several years. We are recommending that the board consider the 7% annual increase in order to accommodate the Site B capital improvement program, and that the board give direction that this would be for a five-year period. That would be our recommendation.
Discussion.
How soon can this be changed?
The, the board can make changes to the rates at any point in time that they, they choose to. Understand, though, there could be, there could be impacts to that. But if the board chooses to make changes to the rate mid-year, I believe, that's possible. I, I don't see that there's anything that a board could not do to change if they wish to.
So a board could come in and lower the rates?
It's my understanding, if, if a board came in mid-year and wanted to change rates, they certainly could.
So it's not a five-year set rate, it's a five-year plan?
Yes, sir. So what it is, is, we would be adopting, if, if the board, a commitment from the board for a five-year rate increase. Future boards are not bound by that decision. The rating agencies understand that technically, you can't buy in the hands of a future board five years from now. They use that information that they see there's a commitment from the board to do what's necessary for your plan. They understand that you cannot buy in the hands of future boards.
So if a board came in in December and, or January of next year, and cut the rates back to what they are today, or even lower, then the rate agents, rating agencies would have, would that, what kind of effect would that have? Would it be better not to do it and wait till then? Would it be better to do it now?
Well, so, in, in my opinion, and this is my opinion, if the, if a future board were to reduce rates that a current board had adopted, and that current board had said, we believe this is what it takes in order to fund these capital programs, I think that that would be negatively viewed upon by the rating agencies. I think they would see that as not a commitment in order to, to accomplish your capital program, and they would want to understand, what exactly are you changing about your capital program? Are you taking away things? What are you doing to get to this new rate that you're changing to? And in my opinion, they would likely have a negative reaction to that. Now, whether or not that changes you from a AA to an A, or no change, I can't dictate that, but I mean, I can't, I can't predict that, but I can tell you, I think they would negatively look upon that.
Thank you.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
What I'm hearing you say is that if it's negatively, that process, we negatively impacting our ability to borrow money, it's going to have a severe impact on our ability to fund our schools, any capital that they have.
Well, so it's a two different, so there's two different things there. So the, the utility has its own bond rating.
Okay.
So that would not affect our general government rating. So the utility is a AA rating from two of our rating agencies, and I, one of them is just below a AA. And so if those, and I said if, if those rating agencies were to reduce our bond rating, then our, our rating, then obviously what that would have is an effect on our future borrowing power and our interest rates that we pay for the money that we, the debt that we incur. So you could see increases in the interest rates that we have to pay. Now, interest rates are going up anyway, but that's never necessarily a good thing to have your bond rating decreased.
So our rates would go up because we're paying higher interest on any money, capital we have to buy?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Chairman?
Again, that's if, that's if they, if they were to, to lower your, your bond rating. I'm saying, in my opinion, that would be a very real option, that if a board changes rates, the rating agencies would not look at that very favorably.
I have one more discussion before you make a motion.
Okay.
Commissioner Rushing, I have a way of keeping rates at 0% for three years, and I just want to see how committed you are to it. I move we take all our ARPA money, that's going to put water lines in, that's going to cost us $50,000 plus per customer gained, and we put that money in sewer, and it'll negate the increases for three years. Now, do we give a discount to 51,000 customers, or do we put water to 76 people? Will you support moving the ARPA money and delay rate increases for three years?
I, I'm sorry. Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I cannot, I cannot say that if we put ARPA money, that we can get you a 0% rate increase for three years. We haven't evaluated that, but...
7% of 70 million is 4.9 million.
Okay. I'm not, I just want you to understand, I can't tell you without, with, by factually that we can meet that, but we certainly, if that's the board's direction, we will go back and reevaluate what that would do as far as your rates. I'm, I'm not, I'm not challenging you, I'm just saying, we haven't studied that, so I can't tell you.
I did the math.
Okay. Just, I just want to say that.
Because we've got like 18, 19 million left in there.
Certainly.
You want to keep rates at zero for three years? You're not going to answer? All right, Commissioner Palms?
Yeah.
You made a motion, a motion for...
What?
You got a motion on the thing?
From who?
You can redraw, withdraw.
I'm sorry, I withdraw the motion. Okay, Commissioner.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the Site B plan with a 7% increase for five years, as presented by staff.
Any discussion? Commissioner Sampson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, we've labored on the last two weeks over this, these issues, and it is what it is, and the point has been made often, that you... that you cannot tie the hands of future boards. Some people see that as coercion or trying to pressure, but it's just a factor. As I near the end of my 12th term, I respect the people, the people have spoken, not many of them, everybody that could have voted, very few did. But the ones that did sent a message. And I respect that. I respect that the people have spoken and the fate and direction of our county is soon to be under new leadership. I'm also certain of a few things that, one particularly being change is certain and constant. And our success over time is how we adapt or respond to the changes we encounter. Now, it's been my experience, particularly in Union County, that much of this change is driven by the three enterprises. I'm a capitalist too, heart. Growth doesn't just happen. Demand-driven. The size of growth in our school system is demand-driven. Housing starts are demand-driven. Our economic development success, Chris Platte showed us last week, is demand-driven. All of these and others are a result of our location. Job opportunities are qualified by our education cost of living and our quality of life. Growth, change, or lack of change has an associated cost. Put action as well as inaction are a cost. All that being said, I respect that those who will be held accountable will make those decisions. But I won't support them.
All right, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman?
All right.
I'd like to say a few things. We've had in the last week with the presentations given by staff and by consultants, we've been told a number of very interesting things, I think. One is that even if we act with the utmost speed in building a new wastewater facility in the Crooked Creek Basin, the existing wastewater facility at Crooked Creek is going to max out. It's going to run out of capacity. And the capacity at this plant is under 2 million gallons a day. It is not a significant facility. And there are, there's, there are opportunities for significant economic growth and economic development. We all know this in the Crooked Creek area, in Indian Trail, in Stallings, that are not going to be possible, that are going to be dead in the water if we don't proceed with a wastewater facility in the Crooked Creek Basin. We've had the head of our, the director of our Economic Development Office tell us in public meetings and no uncertain terms that the audience that he pitches to for new opportunities for economic development is narrowed, it's constrained. He is shrinking his audience of companies that he pitches to because of our constraints in wastewater. You know, that is a serious wake-up call. Now, to my mind, there are costs of inaction, as Commissioner Simpson has said. And the cost of inaction, to my mind, is being penny wise, perhaps, penny wise. But what my grandfather would say is pound foolish. And if we don't act on this, if we don't make significant investments in infrastructure, what we're going to find is a diminishing pool, diminishing opportunities of economic development. And we all know what the possibilities are when we bring businesses to Union County and what that ad valorem tax revenue means to the county. It means we can long-term offer tax relief to everybody else. And if, so if we don't do that, at some point in the future, you know, our back, a future board is going to have their backs up against the wall. And they're not going to have any choice but to raise ad valorem tax rates on the rest of us because we've been foolish in the here and now. So this commissioner doesn't like the prospect of 7% increases. But I'm going to support just that because I'm not going to be penny wise and pound foolish. Thank you.
Any more discussion, Commissioner Rushin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, and I, I think what we're missing here is the potential for changes in the way things are funded, even at the state level. And in discussions with state legislator and discussions with builders, they have shown an interest in trying to find a different way to fund some of these projects that would pass the burden on to the home, the home buyer, not to the current rate folks. But that's going to take some, that's going to take some negotiations. And you can't negotiate when you've already done it. And a 7% increase is not what I'm hearing. For water-only customers, I'm hearing a 15% rate increase plus a 7% rate increase.
Certainly.
Compounded whatever that is, 20-something percent rate increase on just, on just water customers. City Monroe still growing. City Monroe has got plans for a sewer plant in the Rocky River sub-basin. We've got plans for expansion of a plant in the 12 Mile Creek Basin. And we've got the permits already in hand. So we have that ability to do that. Again, how is that going to be paid for? Needs to be looked at before we start raising rates. And thank, I appreciate you, Commissioner Simpson, for what you said about the clear message. It's not that we're looking at stopping. And I even had a discussion with one of the school board members this week and discussed that, you know, if it is a no-growth option, that means less school funding too. I mean, everything means less funding. It's not just, this is not a decision made in a vacuum. But the people of this county are desperately asking for some relief. And that has some consequences to it. You know, not less money overall for schools, but less money than would have been there for schools. Not less money overall, but less money that would have been there for new programs or new, you know, things to spend in the county. So it has to be managed. And what I would say is just, you know, if we could not do anything until we can get in and start negotiating with people, with our legislators, and it would be better to do that than pass a rate increase that is going, I fully believe is going to be rolled back as soon as a new board takes office because, you know, I just can't say it any different way. That's what I campaigned on. That's what the other two that got through the primary campaigned on. I don't see that campaign changing. And sorry, but that's just, that's what I see. And it would be, I think it would be foolish to go to the rating agencies and, hey, look at all this new money we got when it's not going to be there most likely next year. So, you know, can we give it six months? Can we give it some time? That's the question here. And I'm just wondering why we can't give it a little bit more time?
Commissioner Hems?
Mr. Chairman, I, I made the motion because I am confident that Union County is going to grow. We're in a situation right now because Commissioner Rushin, back in 2006, gave excuses why we can't do it. And that's all he's done since then. We have to take action, like Commissioner Williams said. We owe it to the people of Union County and our new residents. We're going to have new residents too. We're a very attractive area. And we had one of the strongest economic development growth year this past year. We can have that again. And that economic growth generates a much higher tax revenue and relieves the burden on our citizens. So I continue now. You know, Mr. Rushin sat in his, underneath his keyboard and sat down and said, I'm out of touch and I'm out of time. Well, blocked where I couldn't see it, but I will be out of time in December of 2024 when my term ends. But until then, I'm going to try to make decisions that I feel comfortable that are best for the citizen, all citizens of Union County and the county's growth. So I'd like to call the question, Mr. Chairman, that there's a motion on the?
All in favor of calling the question? Correct. Aye. All in favor of Commissioner Hems' motion to go with the five-year rate plan? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Just for clarification for the board, and that's because we don't necessarily need direction, but it will be included in the budget is the 50% additional increase in miscellaneous fees will be included in the budget as well. As well as the, because of the board has selected at this point in time the Site B option, that will then be built into the future system development fee study that StanTech will be doing as well. So just a matter of clarification so you're aware that those things will be moving forward. Obviously, this is not a vote to do these things. The board still has to take action on the adoption of the budget. And I believe that's June 13th. But thank you very much for direction. We look forward to the actual decision, whatever that may be, on June the 13th. And we will go from there. I don't have anything else. I'm sorry, I do have something. I'm sorry, I apologize. Yes, sir. I did want to go over the timeline so you're aware of what's going to happen. So the Board of Governors will need to meet on June the 6th. And you'll have to have a public hearing on the budget, on the proposed budget. They'll also have an appropriation there for the system development fee that we do. Because annually, we appropriate the amount of system development fees that we've collected. And then we put that in the budget. That's how that works. So you'll, the Board of Governors, we need to do that. The Board of Commissioners on June 6th will also have a public hearing for the budget as well. And then you will have also water and sewer write-offs on that agenda.
Is that from the COVID time when people were allowed not?
I believe that that is what that's related to. And then June 13th, and that's a special meeting. That's an off-meeting from your normal schedule. You will have the consideration of the adoption of the budget as Board of Governors, as well as the rate schedule adoption as Board of Governors. And then the miscellaneous fees, those will all be items that the Board of Governors will have to take action on on 13th. And then the Board of Commissioners will also have the option to adopt the budget as well as the rate schedules for this, for the utility and any other rates for the rest of the other departments. So that's your schedule that's coming up. So you have opportunities to make some decisions between now and June 13th.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman. Brian, you mentioned system development fee that based on direction that the Site B cost would be folded into the calculation or the study for the system development fee. And would you remind me when that is going to be coming back to the board?
So the, we will be doing a contract for that in the near future. The StanTech, it will start on that in the summer. It will take them several months before they're actually completed with it. Then there are some statutory requirements for making that available to the public for them to have comment period. It is likely that it will be, I'm going to say March or April before you have the ability to make a decision on adopting that. It would not take effect until July 1, but it would likely be March or April before you have the study for you to take action on.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that that was what the timeline was in relation to all the other discussion.
We may be able to present you with the results of the study, but there'll still be a window which we need public comment and all the hearings and things that go along with that. But at the earliest, I believe it would March or April for you to be able to take action on it.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing. It's with profound sadness and heavy hearts that we inform you of the passing of Chris Platte's father. Chris Platte is our Economic Development Director. The funeral service will be held at St. Margaret's Episcopal Church located on Ray Road in Waxall Tuesday, May the 31st at 11 o'clock. And our prayers and thoughts are to go out to Chris and his family during this time.
Do you have any further information on past Commissioner Roger Lane?
We do not, we do not. We know he experienced a major health episode yesterday, but I do not have a, an update on that for you at this time.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, motion to adjourn?
Thank you very much.